All right, welcome. Good to see you all today. As we do this time of year, we like to throw an academic pep rally. So Dr. Olson thought it would be nice to maybe bring in some, someone to speak to you, to maybe motivate you. So he decided to ask Dr. Mark Emmert to come in. So just a big round of applause for Dr. Emmert.[24.02][24.02](APPLAUSE). We're very fortunate to also have Vice President of Division Two, Teri Steebe, and Mark's Chief of Staff, Dr. Emmert's Chief of Staff, Carrie Van Sennas. Hope I got that right, Carrie.[41.14][41.14](APPLAUSE). As everything we do, we try to make this student-driven. So I'm going to hand it over to Rachel, who will be introducing Dr. Emmert.
It is my honor to introduce NCAA President, Dr. Mark Emmert. In his tenure as President of the NCAA, Dr. Emmert has worked tirelessly to support us NCAA student athletes in our academic endeavors. Dr. Emmert is the second of two NCAA Presidents who previously served as a professor, administrator, and then President of a university or college. As NCAA President, Dr. Emmert has prioritized higher eligibility guidelines for student athletes in an effort to increase student academic success, as well as success in life beyond the university. Under Dr. Emmert's leadership, the NCAA has increased the study of safety of both practice and competition policies, and analyzed the existing time demands on student athletes. Dr. Emmert's academic background is in political science and in public administration. In addition to serving as President of his alma mater, the University of Washington, he has held a variety of administrative posts and is a Life Member of the Council on Foreign Relations. Dr. Emmert is no stranger to upstate New York as he earned his doctorate at Syracuse University. Please give a warm welcome to NCAA President, Dr. Mark Emmert.[134.66][134.66](APPLAUSE).
Well, thank you. Can I take this out? This work if I, because I wander. First of all, thank you all for taking time. I know this is exam week and you'd all really rather be studying than be here. That was a joke. Shouldn't have. So I'm glad to give you a break from studying so you can be here. My hope is that we can get a chance to talk. I know you have questions for me from your colleagues here, and I want to just make a couple of quick comments and then move as fast as we can to your comments and questions and see what's on your mind. Whenever I get a chance, I like to get on campuses and meet with student athletes in particular, but you know, coaches and athletic administrators too, so I can learn what's going on, on the ground, and what's working for you and what's not working for you, and things that the association can do better to help make your experience as student athletes even better. There's a lot of, I think confusion is the right word, about what the NCAA is and what it isn't. Most people that just sort of read the newspapers tend to think of the NCAA kind of like the NFL, or any other, or the U.S. Olympics, or something, just some other sports organization, which is absolutely the opposite of what it is. The NCAA is a collection of over 1,010 now, colleges and universities across all three of the divisions. And all of the rules, all the decisions that are made, all of the policies that are put in place, are made collectively by those schools. So each of the universities and colleges, through a very complex representation model, kind of like Congress, sends representatives to sit down and debate and discuss the sports policies, the guidelines under which sports are run. Everything's made, all those decisions are made collectively. So the individual schools themselves are the ones who set all the rules and standards. And at the top of that organizational model is a group of university presidents called the Board of Governors. And that Board of Governors consists of 16 university presidents. They're technically my bosses, and those are the group of people to whom I report. And President Olson, your president, happens to be one of those people. So he's in a position where he's very, very influential in the organization and oversight of college sports. Has a big impact on what happens and what doesn't happen around all of sport. That decision-making process winds up dealing with all kinds of things. Some of them pretty mundane and uninteresting, and some of them really big and very, very consequential. So a good example is, you may be aware that in the fall, we made collectively, we being me and the Board of Governors, made a decision to not have championships in North Carolina because of some of the laws that North, a law that North Carolina put in place. That was a decision that I sat down with those 16 presidents. We said, "What do we want to do here? Does this fit in with the policies and the values of college sport?" And they concluded along with me, "Nope, it really doesn't. We don't want to play there anymore." Then the state changed its laws. We sat down again. Dr. Olson was involved in this conversation. We sat down and said, "Okay." They changed their laws. Is this enough for us to feel comfortable taking championships back there, Divisions One, Two, and Three? And said, "Yeah, okay, let's do that." Even though it was not everything that we wanted, it was movement enough in the right direction that everybody said, "Yeah, fine." So from things that are that high a level, down to transfer rules, and everything in between, and academic standards, and everything in between, those are all set by the individual presidents and athletic directors, senior women's administrators, and students who participate in those decision-making conversations. So for me, sitting down with you all, as you heard from my introduction, I was a professor, university president, spent 30 years on campuses. I miss being on campuses. I miss having my own students. But I need to get back and hear from you about, again, what's working, what's not working, and that's what I want to do with you. The last thing I want to say is that the biggest challenge, I think, as we deal with all of the complexity of college sport, the finances, the rule structures, you know, all of the issues that are involved, is trying to stay focused on the things that really matter. College sport is not just about sport. It's about athletics that go on inside the context of education, universities and college education. So we try hard to keep everybody that's setting the rules and the policies and procedures focused on, on just three things. The first is that this is all about getting an education. And that if your participation in sport doesn't help and support you getting an education, then we need to address that. Then those are limitations on what we're doing. This should be about you being successful first and foremost as a student, because that's what's going to change your life. Yes, we want you to compete at the highest level you're capable of and have a great athletic experience, but we want you to learn everything you can from that experience as a man and a woman, and we want you to have success in the classroom as well. And if that's not working, then nothing else matters. The second thing is, we've got to make sure that we do all of that on campus and in conferences and everywhere, in a way that supports your health and well-being. Universities bring you in and encourage you to come join them as freshmen, and you're supposed to come here and then, how many seniors here? Bunch of seniors? How many of you are going to graduate this year? Okay, bunch of you? When you finish up and leave, we want you to be better for that experience, right? Our responsibility is to develop you as men and women. And that means to take care of your physical and mental well-being as well, so that when you leave and you commence, you go through commencement, that doesn't mean it's the end of something. That means it's the beginning of something, and it's the beginning of the rest of your life. And we're supposed to be getting you ready for that. That's universities and colleges and the NCAA's responsibility. So first, help you get an education, a meaningful education that's going to change your life. Second, make sure that you're healthy mentally and physically when you go on into the world. And then third, we want to make sure that we do that in a way that's fair. A whole notion of fairness becomes critical, because we want your relationship with your school to be fair, the school's relationship to you to be fair. We want you to feel like when you went on a field, you were engaged in fair competition. We need to have structures in place that make sure that, you know, the people that are following the rules get rewarded for it, and the people that don't follow the rules don't get rewarded for it. And so the notion of staying focused on that fairness component becomes really, really important as well. So those three things, your education, your health and well-being, and the fairness of that whole enterprise are the things that we try to stay focused on. Get distracted a lot by all the stuff that's going on out there every day, but I'm hoping that we can talk about those three things today and anything else that's on your mind. So with that, I'd like to stop and take any questions that you all have. Okay? Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Emmert. My name is Mamion Kumamensa. I am the SAC Coordinator and the NCAA Division Two Minorities and Women's Grant Recipient. Both SAC and Sports Management Club members have prepared some questions for you today. And now presenting, Andrew Greenaway.[601.88][601.88](APPLAUSE).
Good morning.
Hi, and welcome to Damon College. My name is Andrew Greenaway. I'm on the Track and Field, Track and Field Team at Damon College. I'm a graphic design major, and I'm a sophomore. I'm from Brooklyn, New York. And my question today for you is, what drew you to the role of becoming the President of the NCAA?
I couldn't hear the first, what took me to, what took me to this role? What, I'm sorry?
What drew you to the role?
Oh, what drew me to it? You know, that's a really good question, because it wasn't, it wasn't a job that I aspired to all my life, you know? And in fact, I was a little surprised when I was first approached about it. So as you heard in the introduction, I'm the second former university president to also be President of the NCAA. And there was a guy who was the President of the Association, a man named Miles Brand. And he'd been doing it about, about as long as I'd been doing it, about six years. He'd been President of Indiana. He'd been President of University of Oregon. And he tragically got ill and died very suddenly, about a short period of time. And so the Board, again, that Board of Governors, that your president now sits on, decided that they really wanted to get another university president to lead the Association to make sure that it was tied to higher ed. And I completely agreed with that and got involved in some conversations, and some people said, "Yeah, and we were thinking about you." Well, that's a part of the conversation I wasn't really ready for. I had all my adult life, and even before that, wanted to be President of my alma mater. I'm a first-generation college graduate, the only one in my family to ever get a college degree, come from a very working-class background. Being a university president was an unbelievable success in my mind, because, you know, I didn't know anybody had gone to college except my teachers. And so when I was President of Washington, my alma mater, I was like at the pinnacle of my career in my mind. And all of a sudden, I got approached about this job. And the more I thought about it, the more I got attracted to it, because I'd seen in all my campus work with my student athletes and my ADs and everybody, the impact that sports has on students' lives, and that it becomes one of the most powerful educational experiences, not just athletic experiences that you guys get. Because today, if you think about your colleagues that don't play sports, it's really hard today to learn some of the things you're learning. You guys are learning resilience. You're learning, you know, how to win and how to lose, hopefully graciously. You're learning teamwork and commitment. You're learning time management like nobody's business. You're learning how to communicate and be a part of a team in ways. Those are all really the skills that are going to serve you so incredibly well in life, even though it may not feel like it right now. Those things are real hard to teach in a classroom. The best place to teach them is on a field, or a track, or in a court. And so I'd seen that firsthand, and the idea to get to work with what's now almost a half a million student athletes, because that's how many there are of you, became really, really attractive to me. And I stepped into it about six and a half years ago, and I've been delighted with it. It's not always fun, but it's mostly fun, and whenever I'm on a campus, I always love it. So that's really kind of how it happened. It was almost an accident, but it was a really happy accident in my mind.
Thank you.
Thank you.[824.13][824.13](APPLAUSE). Hi, how are you?
My name is Andrea Desar. I'm a sophomore here at Damon and studying physical therapy, and I'm also a member of the women's soccer team. Thank you for coming to Damon, and my question is, how do you lead an organization with such a diverse group of institutions in the NCAA? From small Division III colleges to large FBS universities?
And I think that's, that's one of the most difficult elements of making the NCAA work as an organization. And as I said, you know, there's this mythology out there that I'm like the Commissioner of the NCAA, sort of like Roger Goodell, you know, passing forth rules and decisions, and that's exactly the opposite. It's all done through this very complicated representative government model. And so each of the three divisions, because of the differentiation you're talking about, each of the three divisions has their own governance structure. So to the extent that Division III schools are all relatively similar, you know, they make decisions together, and D2 makes decisions together, and D1 makes decisions together, but even there, you've got huge differences. So, you know, St. Bonaventure up the road's a D1 school, and Ohio State's a D1 school, and they couldn't be more different, right? I mean, they're wildly different schools, but yet they sit and make rules together. The breadth of D2 schools is pretty big, not quite as big in D3. So finding overall policies that fit every student's circumstances is really, really hard. The, you know, I wind up guiding and shaping those debates and discussions, even though I don't technically vote on any of that stuff. I help frame the questions, try to keep people focused on those three things I was talking about. What's this doing to help students? Is this fair for students? Is this advance their health and well-being? But it, sometimes it just really doesn't work, because some of the other big differences are economic. So if you look at a school like Ohio State University, their athletic department budget is, I don't know, $175 million right now. I just saw Coach Saban at Alabama's new salary. It's probably as big as your athletic department budget. Coach, it's bigger. It's bigger, right? So the football coach at Alabama's salary is bigger than your entire athletic department budget, right? So you look at some of that and you just go, "How does this make any sense?" But if you look at, again, the things that are supporting your education, your health and well-being, the rules around your health and well-being, that shouldn't vary. You know, everybody has a responsibility to take care of their students and make sure that their health and well-being's the same. Shouldn't matter whether it's, you know, a little liberal arts college of 1,200, or Ohio State, or Texas. That ought to be the same. What those schools can do in other domains becomes highly variable. But it's a, it's a real juggling act, and I'm glad you thought of that and saw it, because I think it's the biggest, most difficult thing for the Association collectively.[1027.13][1027.13](APPLAUSE).
Jared?
Morning, and welcome to Damon. I, my name is Jared Dennis. I am a Sports Management student here at Damon, and on behalf of the Sports Management Club, thank you for coming. My question is, what do you think of colleges moving from one division to another?
Well, you know, the interesting thing about, about the college athletic structure, because it's not just the NCAA, it's NAI. Damon used to be an NAI school. You've got, you've got several different levels that a school can decide where it wants to be. So the decision can be driven by, should be driven by, first and foremost philosophically, where does a school want to be? So there's some big, very wealthy schools that say, "We're going to play Division III." University of Chicago, right? One of the most distinguished universities, very wealthy school, and they say, "We're going to play Division III. That's what we want to do." You know, interestingly, Chicago, 100 years ago, was one of the most powerful athletic programs in America. They were one of the founding organizations, founding universities in the NCAA. They had a famous football coach, Lorenzo Stagg. In fact, the Stagg Bowl and the Stagg Cup is named after the Chicago football. They play D3 football now, and they don't want to do anything else. They made that conscious decision that that's where they want to play. Other schools that say, "You know, D2 is exactly the right fit for us. Fits our, our balance between academics and athletics we're trying to fit, fits the size and scope of the school, fits our economic model, perfect place to be." Others can say, "You know, we've, we've been a D3 for a while. We want to go to a D, a D1." Or like Chicago, you can say, "I'm a D1 and I want to go to D3." You get to pick and choose. So the real decision is up to the leaders of that university about where they want to go, where they want to be, what makes sense economically for them and philosophically with the, with what, what, excuse me, with what their individual programs are on that campus. So, you know, from my point of view, schools make those decisions based upon their, you know, their own interests and values. And our job in the national office, the people that work for me, is to help them with those choices, and then if they make the choice, help them make the transition.
Christina?
Good morning, Dr. Emmert.
Good morning.
It's an honor to have you here. I'm Christina Apostol. I'm an international student from Romania, also freshman on the volleyball team. My question for you today is, what is NCAA actually providing to ensure there are opportunities for international students to be part of collegiate sports?
Yeah, you know, it's, we've been, we've been talking a lot about international activities really recently in my senior management team, leaders in the national office, but also among the Board of Governors and the, all three of the divisions. In fact, just last week, I guess it was, just last week, the Boards were meeting, and they approved the, a permanent provision to first of all, allow international universities from Canada and from Mexico to join the NCAA. And each of the three divisions, One, Two, and Three, gets to decide whether they want to allow one of those schools to come in or not, and then the rules by which they would engage. So right now, only Division Two has done that. Simon Fraser University from, from outside Vancouver, British Columbia is a member of Division Two. There's some other schools in Mexico that are interested, and we'll probably see some development there over the coming years, I would guess. But that's whole schools that want to compete, you know, against the United States, which is different than someone like you who comes as an, excuse me, waving in front of you. Comes from, I wave a lot. Comes from, from outside the country, into the country. We don't have any restrictions at all in any of the three divisions on international students coming and playing in, in any of our sports. There's occasionally challenges around making sure that we understand academic backgrounds and transcripts, because they look different. Romania's pretty straightforward, but there's, you know, other parts of the country, of the world that are developing countries where I just try to figure out transcripts and things like that are interesting. There's also occasionally, you know, amateurism issues where a student athlete in, you know, in Track and Field, let's say, has been running professionally outside the country, because there's not high school sports, as you know. So if you're going to develop as an athlete, sometimes you've got to play with professional teams in order to develop your skills. Well, then, are they still an amateur or not? And we get into some debates about that. But otherwise, it's strictly up to the universities themselves to decide how many and, and from where do we want international students to come to our campus, and what financial aid can we provide them? So we saw in, this year in, in basketball, at the Division One Tournament, St. Mary's, a little, small liberal arts college, St. Mary's University out in the San Francisco area, it made it to the Division One Men's Basketball Tournament. They had seven Australian players on their team. They started four Australians. So it was, for all intents and purposes, an Australian basketball team, and that's, you know, not uncommon. Who's the tennis players here? Any international tennis players? A couple? Yeah, I mean, increasingly, you see lots and lots of international tennis players. Soccer players? Any international soccer players? Yeah, sure. Right? So there's a number of, volleyball, lots, especially women's volleyball. A lot of international players in, in certain sports. Probably not very many international football players. You guys don't play football, but you know, not many of those. But in, in all the other sports where there's corollaries, you see a lot of international students. And I think it's great, because universities, it's good for the American students to have international classmates. They'll learn a lot from you, and vice versa. And just sets, sets up you all, because in your lives, you're going to live and work internationally. You may not see that, it may not be obvious to you, but you will, because that's just the nature of the world today. And so the more integration with international students, and vice versa, the better.
Thank you.
Sure.[1420.23][1420.23](APPLAUSE). Now, I will tell you, one, one area where we occasionally, we in higher ed, you know, and universities occasionally get people a little unhappy with us, is, is the U.S. Olympic teams. So as you heard, I was President of the University of Washington. Well, we had a bunch of Olympians. Washington has a big rowing program, and we had a bunch of Olympic rowers come out of the University of Washington. What the U.S. Olympic team was unhappy with is, they were all Canadians, and they wound up rowing against the Americans from Canada and beating the Americans, which was a whole different story. So they kept saying, "You're training the competitors. What are you doing?"
Welcome to Damon. My name is Katie Goode, and I'm a part of the women's bowling team. I'm studying childhood special education. My question is, how do you feel about student athletes who leave college to pursue professional careers?
Yeah, so if you couldn't hear, the question was, how do I feel about student athletes leaving to, to participate in professional careers? I think if, if, you know, somebody has a real opportunity for, for sport athletics to be a real career, then they ought to pursue it, and they ought to, if that's what they want to do, they ought to pursue it and they ought to do it in a way that makes the best sense for them. So, you know, participating in college sports at a, at a really strong athletic program is a, an amazing preparation for a professional sport. In most every sport, there's somewhere it's probably better to pursue other avenues. But for most sports, and almost all the NCAA sports, if you think you're going to be a professional basketball player, or, you know, whatever, it makes good sense to, to try and use a collegiate route to develop your skills. What troubles me, though, is that we have far too many student athletes in college leave before they finish their degree, thinking that they're going to make it and be successful professionally, and they're not. So let me tell you what I mean by that. So there's, there's around, let's see, in men's basketball, between Division One and, about, Teri, how many Division Two men's basketball players would there be? There's how many teams? How many schools? So, yeah, so 300, so 4,000, let's say. So there's about 4,000, 5,000 Division Two men's basketball players. There's about 5,000 Division One. So Divisions Two and Three, excuse me, One and Two together, there's 10,000, let's say, easy numbers. 10,000 men's basketball players. The NBA draft is coming up. They're going to take 60, 60 kids, all right, young men, into the NBA. At least 20 of those, maybe 30, but at least 20 of those will be international players. Didn't go to college, they're coming from somewhere international. So that means 30 to 40 slots in the NBA. So I know everybody in here is really quick at math. 10,000 players, 30 positions. What's disturbing to me is when we survey all of you, because we send surveys out to students all the time, 75% of the Division One players, where's the men's basketball players? Okay? 75% of Division One players say, "I'm going to be a professional basketball player." A little under 2% will ever be a professional basketball player, but 3/4 of them, 75%, say, "I'm going to do it." About 50% of the D2 players say, "I'm going to be a professional player." About half of you guys say that when we survey you. About 1% will ever get to play professionally. So that 2 or 3% that are ever going to play professionally, great. Let's support you in every way that you can. But when we see students leave college, and then go out and try and play professionally and not make it, we want you to have an opportunity to come back and finish college, because that's what's going to change your life. And, you know, the odds are very, very high, you're going to make a living like everybody else, not as a professional athlete. So how, I worry about how can we help all of you get really, a really good sense of what that marketplace looks like? Am I really good enough to make it professionally? Or is that my cousin telling me I am, but my cousin doesn't really know what he or she's talking about? But do I really have the chops to, to make that work? We just got, this year, the NBA to change its rules. We work closely with the NBA. So the NBA is now doing essentially a, a tryout, right? A combine sort of tryout. They invited 75 players as all. Now, remember, there's 10,000 of them in Divisions One and Two. They only invited 75. They tried them out, they're going to, they're rating them, and then those young men will get a chance to say, "Eh, okay, they say I'm not going to get drafted, I'm going back to college." If you're not one of those 75 that got invited, you are not going to the NBA. At least not this year. And so we're trying to get people to get some realistic sense of what works and what doesn't work. If you can really make it, and you're really going to be successful, God love you, go do it. Whether it's tennis, or it doesn't matter what the sport is. But we want you to have a realistic sense of what the odds are, and not, you know, what your high school coach told you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.[1770.33][1770.33](APPLAUSE).
Mark?
Hi. Good morning. It's an honor to have you here. I'm Christina Apostol. I'm an international student from Romania, also freshman on the volleyball team. My question for you today is, what is NCAA actually providing to ensure there are opportunities for international students to be part of collegiate sports?
Yeah, you know, it's, we've been, we've been talking a lot about international activities really recently in my senior management team, leaders in the national office, but also
Hi, Dr. Emmert. Thank you for coming today. I'm Mark Byngruber, and I am on the men's tennis team, and also an accounting and business major. My question is, is how, what advice can you give to somebody that, or not somebody, to student athletes that have that dumb jock stigma? And also, what can the NCAA do to change that?
Yeah, another good question. So, first of all, let's talk about the dumb jock stigma. So here's what we know as fact. We know that in both Divisions 1 and 2, student athletes, you all, have higher graduation rates than the rest of the students at almost every campus in the country. Okay? Almost every campus in the country, the NCA athletes have higher graduation rates than the non-athletes. And yet, it persists that somehow you're not as good a student athlete as, I mean, good as students as others are. We push those data out as aggressively as we can. In fact, we're going to be issuing the new set of findings on the 10th, I think, for Division 1 for sure. Division 2 also, I think, on the same day? Yeah, in the fall. And so what we do, what we're trying to do now, is we push that information out nationally, and I'm not going to bash the media, because there's plenty of people doing that right now. But, you know, the media does not really like good stories. So when the story is, kid goes to college, plays tennis, graduates from college, that's not a story to them. You know, they just say, well, yeah, that's what's supposed to happen. But if you flunked, then that would be a story to them. So we're trying every way we can to get the stories out, and sometimes we have to personalize it and tell individual stories. Where we found that it works best is to do it locally. So when we get information about your graduation rates, for example, and it's a high graduation rate, we can work then here with you guys locally to get a story in the Buffalo newspapers that said, "Damon Athletes Graduated," you know, 10% is higher than the national average, or whatever the story is, because local papers and local media will cover those stories. So you can get it done locally. We're trying to work hard with local folks so that they understand it. You personally, you all can play a really important role with this in a classroom, because probably a lot of your classmates, one, may not know you're an athlete, and they should, and two, your professors need to know who you are, and they probably know you're an athlete, but make sure that they also know you're a good student and you're serious about it, and that, you know, just be an academic leader in the classroom, too, because they pay attention to who you are. And you can help turn that around here on your own campus. But nationally, the data are just, they sow dispel this whole dumb jock notion. It just drives me crazy if any of you watched, just one interesting data point, if anybody watched the national championship football game this year, Alabama played Clemson for a national championship. When those teams took the field, 27 of those players had already graduated that semester. They'd finished their college education. Three of them already had master's degrees. The Player of the Year in Offense and Defense, both had already graduated from college. And you looked at that, you said, well, and that's true at our Division 2 championships. You know, so trying to get the media to pay attention, that's hard, but the facts are completely contrary, and we keep pushing it, and we will keep pushing it. But you guys can play a really important role in that, too. Put your hand in the air when it's question time. Say, "Hi, as a tennis player, I want to know."
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brandon?
Good afternoon, President Emmert. My name is Brandon Michael, and I'm a sports management major. Oh, wow. I'm a sports management major. My question for you is, what advice would you give to sports management or athletic training students that would like to work in college athletics but are not student athletes?
Well, I think, first of all, it's kind of like any job. You know, you need to make sure that you're doing everything you can academically, obviously, to prepare yourself, but you need to try and find ways of getting real hands-on experience. That's, you know, going over and begging to do anything in the athletic department. Do they beg a lot? Does that happen? A lot of begging going on? Yeah, begging works. Yeah, begging, volunteering, make a nuisance of yourself, you know, just do whatever you need to do to find a way to get some practical experience, so you start to understand what the broader enterprise is about of college sports, or sports in general. You know, don't be unwilling to go try at other places, too, not just here at Damon. You know, look where sports is going on in your community, even professional sports, and try and find ways to get entrees in there, even if you've got to do it for free. You know, just be a volunteer, do everything you can to be around those games. We, we're going to be back here in a while, I forget what year, for another round of the NCA Men's Division 1 Basketball Tournament. So, you know, find ways to volunteer for those things, get involved in them in every way that you can. And then I think, you know, if you keep your eye open for any kind of internships or other activities that get your foot in the door, or that you've got specific experiences or skills, you know, like whether it's on the business side of it, or whether it's on the marketing side of it, or whether it's on the fundraising side of it, or the events promotion side of it, you know, try and figure out some way that you can develop some skills that give you a little niche to get into any one of those places. Don't necessarily assume that you're going to just become an athletic director or a commissioner like right away. Find a way in the door that you can develop specialized skills. And then lastly, what I often find is that you can get a lot of opportunities by being the person who'll do the job nobody else wants to do. I've, you know, there's a lot of tasks that people look at and go, "I don't want to do that." Be the guy that says, "Yeah, I'll do that. I'll take that one up," even if it doesn't necessarily look sexy or fun or exciting. You know, be the one that's willing to put your hand up. That's what I advise. By the way, I think that's true of any profession.
Thank you.
You bet.
Max?
My name is Max Winsburn. I'm from England. I'm an international student here, like Christina. I play on the men's golf team, and I study international business. My question for you, and I think it's the last one today, what does your ideal athletic program look like, just a general overview?
What does the ideal athletic program look like? Well, it's, that's a fun question. So if I can just, you know, kind of, my fantasy athletic program. First of all, it's one that's really well-integrated into the academic life of the university, that provides, I'm assuming away, rules and money, okay? That provides you all with the time and opportunity to make sure you're taking the major that you want to take, that you have time and opportunity to do internships if you want, study abroad if you want. You're already studying abroad, but your classmates study abroad, opportunities that you want, that, you know, provides you with access to all of the things that a great university or college has to offer, not just this athletic program. I think then, on the athletic side, it's one where, you know, you've got student athletes that are working together collectively on teams or in their individual sports, but, you know, as a cohesive whole, so that you're part of something bigger than yourself, and that the programs, the coaches, and the program overall emphasize that. And that allows you to, in my perfect mind, it allows you a chance to sit back and say, you know, why am I doing this, and what do I want to get out of this experience? Not just that I'm, maybe I'll get my PGA Tour license sometime, maybe I have my card sometime, maybe I will, maybe I won't, but, you know, why am I playing this game, and what's it contribute to my life? And how can I help my classmates, my teammates, get better in those things, too? Not just their, you know, not just their short iron game, but, you know, the things that are going to make them successful in life. And then lastly, it's one, and it includes all the things I've been talking about, taking care of you physically and mentally and all of that. But then lastly, it's a program that's also linked to the community around you. I think sports programs don't take full advantage of their connectivity with your alumni and your former student athletes. And this is a relatively young Division 2 program, obviously, but, you know, there will be, there are now, and there will be even more alumni, whether it was in golf or other sports, or there's people in the community that will like you and want to work with you and help you because you are an athlete, specifically because you are an athlete here. And it provides really good connectivity, so that you can use those connections out into your life, so that it's helping you in the transition, it's making you take, allowing you to take advantage of school, allowing you to take advantage of your sport, to learn everything you can, obviously allowing you to compete at the highest level, and then helping launch your career and build it over time. That'd be, that'd be like Nirvana to me. And you're really close, right? Yeah, good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, I'd like to ask, are there any student athletes that have any questions for Dr. Emmert?
You can come down to the podium. No? I have some for you, if you don't have any more for me.
Yeah, go ahead.
How much time do we have?
All the time in the room.
All the time in the room. What's that? Five minutes. Okay, five minutes. Dr. Olson wins this one. So, let me ask you, I always have to ask students about time. I was just talking about time, and what I find is that the amazing thing about time is that we all have the same amount, right? It's 24 hours, doesn't matter, rich, poor, smart, dumb, doesn't matter, you get 24 hours. That's it. So can't buy any more of it. Bill Gates doesn't get any more than any of us. So let's imagine for a minute, though, that I get to change that, right? I get to add, just to the athletes right here, this is students, just the student athletes, okay, that are in the room. I get to give you one more hour a day, okay? You get 25 hours. I want to know what you're going to do with that one new hour. But I'm only going to give you three choices, right? You've got to pick one of the three choices. Here's one you can't do: sleep. Because I know that's what you do, right? Because you're all sleep deprived, you're, we know that. We've surveyed you, we've studied it, you're all sleep deprived. By the way, that really affects your athletic performance, but that's a topic for another day. So you've got the three choices. You can spend it on your sport, however you want, study and tape, working out, playing more games, whatever, whatever makes your game better, okay? That's option one. Option two is you can spend it on your schoolwork, spend more time studying, you know, getting, moving your grades up, taking that one extra class, whatever, okay? Or three, you can spend it, I'll loosely call this socially, which is to say, however you want, you know, vegging out in front of a video game, or hanging with your buddies, or, you know, whatever, just, because we also know you don't have enough time for your social lives as you might like. So, now, nobody's watching, nobody's recording, coaches are not looking at you, professors are not looking at you, your friends are not looking at you. How many of you, in all honesty, how many of you would spend that extra hour on your sport? Put your hands up high, so I can see them. Okay. How many of you, that's good. How many of you would spend it on, yeah, yeah, coach, quick, look at me, I got my hand up. Yeah, 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 coach. Yeah, okay, now the academic advisors are watching. How many of you would, no, seriously, how many of you would spend it on your schoolwork, on academics? A little bit more, higher, higher, heads way up, so we can see them. Okay, are they lying, or no? No, okay. All right, how many of you would increase the time on your terrible social lives? So it's, good, all right. That's really interesting. So now, now let me turn this around. So now I've gone from being a wonderful guy that gave you an hour, now I'm going to be an SOB. You only get 23 hours a day. You have to take one hour out of your life, and you can't take it out of your sleep, because that would be what you'd all opt to do. So how many of you would subtract the hour from your sport? All right, that's good to know. This is good to know. The coaches are not looking, their eyes are closed, they're not looking. How many of you have taken out of your academics? Some of you. How many of you would just concede that you will have no social life ever? Most of you. You know, what's really interesting is, I've done this at dozens of schools, and the answers are almost always the same. I mean, it's almost always split evenly when you're adding time, and some would add a little more to the sport. You guys, more of you wanted to do more time on academics, very good, President Olson. You've indoctrinated them well. And then some of you wanted more social life, but when it comes to taking it away, almost nobody takes it away, a very small proportion will take it away from their sport, which is one of the interesting dilemmas that we're having when we try to pass rules around managing your time. You know, because we keep trying, Division 2 was the leader in this, trying to find a way to constrain and manage the amount of time that you will all spend on your sport, when in fact, you don't want to spend less time on your sport, but you would like more time for the rest of your life, and trying to find that balance is really, really hard. So as you guys, as you're, especially your Student-Athlete Advisory Committee, you should think about that. That's an area where we need a lot of help, is you guys talking to your AD and your coaches and your conference about, how can we help you strike a balance that makes as much sense as we can? You wouldn't be sitting here if you weren't a really competitive athlete, and turns out you all want to compete, and you all want to spend time on your sports, at least as much as you're doing, and the idea of taking some away from you is problematic. But we would like to do that. That's my last question.
That's it. Now presenting, our 2017-18 SAC president, John Batista.
Dr. Emmert, thank you so much for spending time with us this morning. Our motto here at Damon is "Be Fierce." A fierce competitor is a person you want to see on your team and not on your opponents. They give their full effort to everything they do. We aim to approach our academic and athletic endeavors with a fierce attitude. Thank you for your fierce advocacy for college student athletes and for the NCAA. Please accept our Damon Be Fierce Award from all of us here at Damon Athletics.
Dr. Emmert has a full schedule today, so you guys hold on a second, but we would just, again, want to give both Dr. Emmert, Terry Steve, Carrie Van Sennas a really warm welcome, and thank you for being here this afternoon. You will hear, we want you to hold for a second, because we do have our Student-Athlete Advisory Committee and Sport Management Club Recognition Awards, which will be given out. I also want to remind you all of something. Last semester, top two GPAs, what were the two teams? Does anyone know? All right, all right, you ready? Put your money where your mouth is. It was not. It was men's golf, and it was women's tennis. So who's going to get it this semester? That's what should be in your mind for the next week. And if you have a teammate that is not doing what they need to do, JJ, get them in order, okay? Because your coaches know the rankings. Ask them the rankings. No one wants to be in the cellar, ever. So those are my parting words to you. I'm going to pass it over to T.O. and Chad Van Everie, who will finish out the program as we take Dr. Emmert and Ms. Steve and Ms. Van Sennas to their next stop. No one wants to be in the cellar.